Yeah, you go to leave your office and you're like, okay, just pick all the things, but now I'm.
We are going, it is approximately four fifty-six. It is August twenty-first, twenty-two five. We are going to begin our special meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is an executive session to discuss settled negotiations and strategy related to litigation expenditures in the case Slaro Land Company LLC in Jefferson County. Case number twenty-twenty-five, C A fifty-five, which is pending in the Second Judicial Circuit. In attendance at this meeting will be Commissioner Chair Austin Hosford, Commissioner J.C. Searls, Commissioner G. Hall, Commissioner Justin Brambling, Commissioner Ben White, County Manager Shannon Metty, County Attorney Helen Rosenthal, Special Litigation Counsel Bill Warner, and a certified court reporter. Warner is now going to reconvene in back room in closed session. I have a motion for Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Searls to close our debate session. All right. All in favor, raise your hand. Say aye. All opposed, say no. And this one, Mr. Traveling, you have to recuse a little bit safe for the record. I guess I will be recusing myself from the upcoming from any votes on this item due to your conflict as previously stated, I believe during the original application of the Slaro truck stop.
As as stated by counsel, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You.
At this time, it would be appropriate for any member of the board to make a motion if they have one.
All right, so we are open for a motion. And there is no counsel.
No motion, it would be appropriate to terminate the session. This point is true.
Okay, with no motion, we will terminate this executive session meeting. Thank you. All right, and we are going to turn right into our regular, regular session agenda. Everyone, please stand for any prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for your many blessings, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather and conduct county business. Lord, we ask for your will to be done. We ask for efficiency. And we ask all of this in your name. Amen. All right. Are there any changes to the agenda before I call for a motion to approve the agenda? All right, so entertain the motion. Thank you, Commissioner Paul. Motion from Commissioner Paul, second from Commissioner Brambling. All in favor, raise your hand. Raise your right hand, say aye. All right, we are going to move right into public announcements, presentations, and awards. We're going to start off with a former Commissioner portrait. Commissioner Walker's portrait presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you. As you all, you know, recall, we lost our beloved Commissioner. I guess it's, I don't even know how long it's been anymore. Time has just gotten away from me, but his family has had a portrait of him that really commemorated and it's just, I don't know, it's just really a distinguished portrait that at the time, I believe someone had asked that we can, if we could have it here in in the annex to honor him and remember him always as he, he was a prestigious member of our community. He always looked out for everybody, you know, and throughout the community and and really was an advocate for Jefferson County as a whole. And Lord knows, he loved his District Five and and he really represented them well. And at this time, his family is here and I believe has a plaque that they would like to present as well as the portrait. So I will turn it over to Mr. Charles Walker and.
Okay, how about that family move over just a little bit? Make sure we're just a little bit that way. Just a little bit. There you go. That's great. They're standing up tall. One little seat. Look at me.
Thank you all for that. Thanks for that. The lifesaver of the world.
So Derek is on his way, but has underestimated exact time. So if you, if the board is okay, can we move on? And then when he gets here, we fit him in. Is that all right? I appreciate it. Thank you.
We're going to move into citizens' requests and input on non-agenda items. Before Miss Beth Young, you would, reminder, when you come to the podium, please name and address for the round.
Beth Young, sixty-four Deerwood Boulevard.
Make sure that green.
They're green on that. Can you hear me? There it's on. There you go. Beth Young, sixty-four Deerwood Boulevard. In all similar shores, I just wanted to comment on two of the items. One, it looks like there's going to be a vote on paying the contractors for part or completing the road work that was part of the million dollar donation. And I wanted to bring to the attention that when they were doing that, we had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of dump trucks up and down that road continually. And they have more or less broken up the entrance to Deerwood Boulevard off of Asheville. And I'd like to put in a request that they be responsible for fixing that part of the entrance. When you get to that item, if you're going to decide to pay him. And the other item I wanted to comment on is that you have a scope of work being put out for the paving of Asheville Highway from where it is now to two twenty-one. And I see there to be scoped to you by October of two thousand and twenty-six. And I didn't see anywhere in here that it said when the actual paving would begin. So that's also what I wanted information on.
Thank you.
We do have an answer for when they'll pay, but we actually have our engineers here that are designing so they can help answer some of these questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Hunter.
So if you have, he is one of that project already awarded for D O T. I think that's fiscal year twenty-eight. The other phases for this project, I think it's going to be broken up into four phases. Haven't been applied for yet on the D O T cycle. We'll continue to do that this year. I imagine paving for the whole corridor would be completed fiscal year twenty-nine.
All right. Citizens' request and input on non-agenda items. Agent Minister, come on down there.
Good evening, Mark Price, four eighty-five Cedar Street, South Florida. Appreciate the opportunity. I came to the meeting last time and there was some concern about the future of our seniors with the closing of Winn-Dixie. And I got thinking about that later and it kind of kept me up at night. So just wanted to share an idea that came to my mind. You know, during COVID, some interesting things did happen that actually are are some goods. You can now order your groceries from Publix with your phone and just go pick it up. And I got thinking, maybe the senior citizen center, maybe in working together with the transit or some other mechanism. But maybe we could get ahead of this before Winn-Dixie closes. If you've been there lately, they're already, you know. But I think if we worked together and got ahead of this, maybe the county could organize a way that our seniors could just order their groceries. And by some facility, the county can go over there and pick them up and just bring them maybe to the senior citizen center where they can get picked up there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else want to speak on non-agenda item? Crowd online. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna jump back. If you want to. Yes, yeah, we're, we're coming back to you right now.
Good evening. July fourth weekend, about two o'clock in the afternoon. And your girl was swimming friends pool. Mr. Kevin Harvey was there sitting by the pool and noticed that she did not come up. So he jumped in, got her out of the pool, and administered CPR, assassinated her. By the time the ambulance got there, which was coming to a drowning child was quick. But had he not been there, the outcome would have been different. She was awake and talking. And he saved her life. There's no doubt about that, people, please. So on behalf of Jefferson County Fire Rescue, we present Kevin Harvey with the lifesaver award in recognition of life-saving and heroic action July fourth weekend. Hey, man. He's going to be way back. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for that incredible story.
Commissioner, we do have a citizen that would like to speak on non-agenda items.
Well, David, address for the record, please.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Hey, yes, ma'am.
Um, my name is Cindy Forehand. I live on Turney Anderson. And I believe Commissioner Walker had arrangements for everybody in the county to get fast access internet. Tri-county customers, it's my understanding that they already have it and some of the Duke customers have it. And what is the status of the rest of the of us getting it?
Thank you for that question. Commissioner White, do you have any update?
Yeah, Tri-County is a Tri-County is is still putting, they're finishing up the bills that they had in plan for the Tri-County customers and for the Duke customers that were next to the lines. They they are working on the, they're working on the bills and the estimates for the sections of the county that the listeners have to work on, but it's going to be, it'll be another year, year and a half before those bills are done.
Okay, because some of our neighbors have it and we saw them putting the line in, what, two years ago? And we still can't get it. But you're saying in a year and a half, we should have it?
Trying, they're trying to get it. I mean, Tri-County would like to get it to every customer in here in the county, but as of right now, I mean, Tri-County, Tri-County is a, is a customer and co-op and they, they build the lines for their customers. And if the Duke customers are within a certain amount of feet from that Tri-County line, they are hooking them up. But it's, there's not a, there's not a date set in stone now about when we will get it hooked to everybody. I mean, that's the plan, but it costs a lot of money and it's a it's a different, it's a different company. It's a different company than Tri-County. It is not.
Though, should the rest of us expect to get internet eventually?
Eventually, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'll chime in real quick. From my understanding, the last time we had the full update, Julius was here. My understanding was they intended to see all of Tri-County's customers hooked up roughly by the end of this year. And then once that was done, they were going to turn their focus towards trying to get the Duke customers hooked up. And they're, this has probably been years since that happened, but I believe they were expecting, you know, twenty twenty-six for the Duke customers to mostly be hooked up. So it is definitely in the works. I don't think anything has changed from their grand scene. It's just a time and and
Okay, because we've noticed a decline in our service with Comcast since some of the other customers are no longer using it, I guess, and even phone service in storms. And definitely not being able to, you know, get jobs and things like that matter. So I think it's important that everybody get it here.
I agree. And I think the will of this board, I think it's changed is to see that through. I think we all agree that is a very important piece to the community and we will be doing things in our power to see it through to get every resident hooked up to host the interview.
Okay, and of course, there are other issues that I'm waiting to hear on, but we'll get that later. Thank you.
Yes, I apologize. I was rushing to get here. Go ahead, man.
Ms. Gray, you go ahead. You're, you're.
Angela Grand, just kind of property appraiser. I just wanted to announce everyone, a reminder that tomorrow your trim notices go in the mail and they will be available online this year. So starting eight o'clock tomorrow morning, you can check your trim online and look for it in mail lots.
It's such good news.
So we're going to stick with the input on my agenda. I apologize. I was rushing to get here. I know the executive session. John Broadway, two eight seven Nash Road. I know prior to this, we had an executive session. I was aware, I think it was regarding, I know you can't speak to it regarding the Slaro Land Company. Just want to make a couple of comments. I don't know who's in attendance. I don't know if the county staff who made a recommendation to approve versus the vote of the board, you know, is there some conflict there? First, second, as I've commented to some of you, I feel like that any decision on the lawsuit should be completely and totally separated from any possibility of any future plan. I don't know if any plan has been submitted, but just making that as a point that, you know, they're two separate entities. I would hope that they can be seen that way and that there's no character stick type thing maybe coming across. And I know you can't speak to it because it's in litigation. And I guess moving forward as that plays out, I mean, I've got to protect my interests and I guess I've got to look and see, will I have, you know, very standing and do if the possibly decision is reversed. And because of basically what they're saying is you guys were wrong and they're right. And I think you were right and you defended the citizens of Jefferson County and I hope you'll stick to it if it's defensible and I think it is based on our complaint argument, which is solid. And so I feel like me personally looking forward, I mean, I'll approach it as it moves forward through the process, but I'll be watching it and I hope that, you know, you just take everything in consideration and let's stick to our guns if, you know, we can. And then I'll be looking forward to hearing what is and play that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robert. All right. Any other citizens' requests and input on non-agenda items before we move into consent? Going once, going twice. All right. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. A motion from Commissioner Brambling, so I might as well use your mission white. Any discussion from the board on consent before I call to vote? Any from the audience? Or online? All in favor, raise your hand. Say aye. All opposed, say no. Moving into general business, item A, pickleball court contractor award agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner. As you have before you, we have the, we did the bid for the pickleball court. We only received one bid. It was from the needy sports construction company LLC. Their proposal was a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for the court for the four courts that were requested and that everything followed procurement. So I'm just looking for a motion to go ahead and move forward.
Commissioner Bradley, any discussion from the board?
This many, it does not hold a lot of people who do that kind of work, or?
No, I actually spoke to quite a few in the planning office and they're like, oh, yeah, we do this all the time, but I don't know why they didn't fit on him.
It reminds things that were where all the court companies side of it situated.
It's going to go where the old, or the basketball court is right above the tennis court. And we'll put another basketball court near where the one is currently. And just as a reminder too, the funds will be coming from the sale of the pop sanitation building. So that's that surplus that we did. So we're not taking out a contingency. That was something that was earmarked for that, so.
I'm sorry, could you, or do you have an idea when they might be able to start?
I don't have a start date, but I did let them know that, you know, we were trying to get it done by October and he said they wouldn't be able to. But he did think they'd be able to finish by the end of October, but I don't know what the start date is. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm pleased that it's online, so hopefully he'll put that on the front page. Do I get that question every week?
All right, I have a motion. Any further discussion from audience or online? All in favor, raise your hand. Say aye. All opposed, say no. Item B, continuing services award agreement. Motion from Commissioner Searls, second from Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion on the item? For the board, audience, online. All in favor, raise your hand. Say aye. All opposed, say no. All right, item C, local preference ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner. At your meeting June fifth of this year, you directed us to bring you back a local preference and county purchasing ordinance. We advertise in compliance with state statutes that proposed ordinance would allow for a local preference and bidding help count work provides for local businesses to certify that they are such, for staff to verify those certifications. And the mechanism would be where low price is the determining factor in the bid. If it's like an invitation to bid situation, the local preference would be applied where a local business is not below bidder, but they're within a hundred and ten percent of that low bid. They would be offered the opportunity to perform the work at a low bid price. And then in the context of requests for proposals, where it's a score out of a hundred percentage points, local businesses would be given a preference in the amount of five percent of the total points available. That's the ordinance in a nutshell. Here, do you got any questions?
I have a motion from Commissioner Brambling, second from Commissioner Searls. And just to clarify that, defines county lines, right? That's not a by.
It's within Jefferson County.
So it's not a by, that's right. It's within the county. Perfect, thank you. Any further discussion from the board before I call to vote or the audience? Or online? All in favor, raise your hand. Say aye. All opposed, say no. Item D, T C gas station TV. And I'll make a public comment later.
Sorry, I, I've had a couple of citizens come up and because the meeting started at a different time that was asking for a public comment again.
For adults at the end of general business to get some of the citizens.
Sorry, the next item is the gas station TV promotional campaign. This is something that the T D C has been working on for a while. We've gone out trying to find other groups that do this. We found one, but it just really was not. We couldn't measure the, the number of actual hits that people were getting. They were in the gas stations that were, had these TVs were in rural areas. It was hard to measure that our, our funds were going towards something that would actually promote Jefferson County. So gas station TV is actually the name of the company. It's not just, you know, the it's not just a random thing. I thought, I didn't realize it was the name of the company, but you know, when you go to fill up at the pump, what this will do is that it'll basically give you kind of a tourism, you know, hey, promote Jefferson County coming. It'll, we have three time periods that we'll be promoting things. The first one, it'll be during farm tour. So it'll be playing in, I think it's Jacksonville, Gainesville, Tallahassee, and Albany is where these is where all of these ads will be played at the, the gas stations there. I don't recall which gas station there. Do you remember? Is where all of these um ads will be played at those, the gas stations there. I don't recall which gas station there. Do you remember? Um but anyways, so it's just little things to promote um our, what our area has to offer. So in September, it'll be. Promoting on the the farm tour. October, it'll be promoting um. Uh I think it's the Christmas and I forget. Oh, and then is it Christmas in October and then? And then it's in general, I forget. I'm, I looked at it this morning and then a lot of things happened. So but either way, it's promoting um. It's promoting our downtown and and getting people to come and shop and spend money here. So the total cost is ten thousand dollars for the the three months. Um the contractor that we already contract with to do a lot of our promotional stuff, um DeBarry. Um he will do the videos for us, so we already pay him to do things. So that's not going to be an additional cost. Uh so. This would just be the cost of the advertising itself, which would be the the ten thousand for the three months. So.
Motion for Commissioner Bradley, second from Commissioner Hall. Uh something I brought to you guys. Couple of months back, um you know, the job of the TDC is to promote tourism, bring. Outside dollars to our businesses here. And I think this is a. A good. Good option for us to try to. Do that. So I appreciate the motion and second. Uh any any discussion from the board? Before I call it to a vote? Any discussion from the audience before I call it to a vote? Or online? All in favor, raise your right hand. Say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item B, ambulance purchase.
Um thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um the uh fire EMS department is in need of a new ambulance. We rotate them out every uh. So many years. I think it's two, but I won't swear to it. That's two, yes. And so it's time for us to to rotate in a new one. The cost is uh two hundred ninety five thousand, which also includes um a stretcher and lift. Uh we have approximately sixty thousand in our impact fees that'll cover the cost of the lift and the stretcher, but the rest. Of the cost is something we were trying to figure out where we would come up with those funds. Um the restitution was something that we had looked at as a possibility instead of pulling out of contingency. We have enough to cover this ambulance. Um I wrote down the exact numbers, but I.
Restitute funds.
Shane, I think what you're looking for in this is just general direction from the board. This is where this is the direction they want to head in. Is that right? Because they actually. Effectually just embody ambulance from a couple of things, formal budget and then grooming the funds from the restitution account and then also. Documentation showing that this meets all the requirements and the county's purchasing policy as a cooperative procurement, correct?
Sure.
And I'm back ultimately for final approval.
Correct, but it would be uh most likely on consent as we've discussed already.
Wait, I amend my motion. That's council standing.
No, second, I'll read my second.
Okay, if I made this motion for Commissioner Searls, second from Commissioner Bradley. This is a legislative request.
Not an ambulance. No, we had some brush trucks that we had as a legislative request, which we did get the funding for, but it took us two years. Um because they were on back order, but we did get four new trucks and they're nice and shiny and I can assure you the water shoots out very well as. Representative Chan Tans shot me with the water, so it was fun.
But clarify. We purchased new ambulance every two years. Last thing we got from twenty twenty one. We've ordered another ambulance on schedule. And they keep pushing it back because there's so open the pipeline. This this is, it's coming before you, but it's actually something, ambulance, we've got two ambulances on order right now. But because of delays, we can't get them. So they were supposed to come October, January of twenty five, twenty six. Now it's gone to April and June. And so what we've done is gone to another company, found a less expensive ambulance. So we're going to get into this ambulance about ten thousand less than the other one. They are, it follows all the procurement. Uh but before we even move forward and cancel the first contract, we didn't issue orders on board. So that's why we're asking for your approval of the body ambulance. There's already two on order. We'll cancel those two. Get this one and then he comes back with the other one. It used to be in my budget. When I ran the numbers, we may have enough in my budget to cover that other ambulance. Uh we took it up. Over the last couple of years, it got taken out of my budget and put in capital. Which is fine, but just so you understand, that is the history behind this.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. Thank you. All right, so we got a general census of of how we want to proceed, counsel?
Yeah, so this will be, this will be going to actually off the final approval once we get that document documentation and the whole.
Thank you so much. All right, item F, up in work chart and personnel policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a, I have a request for consideration of who will revise uh personnel policy and work chart. Reflecting forward direction from the last meeting that certain uh HR functions be shifted from under the county manager's office to over.
So that's always changing that flow there.
Uh yes, the, so the changes of the personnel policy are by and large primarily just shifting. Stuff uh is mostly actually stuff from the HR director to the manager, because most of the stuff in the personnel policy deals with things like. Employee discipline, employee termination, employee evaluation. So that's not something the clerk is going to do. The clerk is going to be doing sort of your non discretionary. HR functions like employee onboarding and offboarding, uh handling um processing and inputting payroll deductions. Record keeping, that sort of stuff. Uh all your employee like supervision and that 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 stuff will stay with the manager's office under either Shannon or her designate. So we needed to do a bunch of workshop personnel policy to clean that up. There's actually a lot of that employee oversight. And supervision stuff was formerly what the HR director. Um so by and large, the changes were just all along those lines. A couple of other minor things here and there, words or thing and whatnot. Um but all those changes are have been made and there's a red line in front of you and also Shannon uh created a revised work chart and Shannon.
Sure, um it it's just noted in the work chart that the deputy, the budget officer and um a the TDC person are not. Department heads, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear um as they would not be have the authority to hire or fire or purchase things. That that's just kind of, they're there to support staff um on other and the the board on other matters. Um and then I also, I wanted to know that um because of. How much work uh the code enforcement actually does for planning and building, we moved code enforcement to under the planning directors. Um uh authority there. So when I bring the budget back to you all in September for next year, you'll see that budget in in. In with the planning department, so.
A motion from Commissioner Bradley, second from Commissioner Searls. So. Of course, TDC coordinator, how does that, does that, is that solely on you or is that the board ultimate decision? How's that work?
It would still be considered an employee of the manager's um office, so it would still be with with me.
Any further discussion before I call it to a vote from the board? Or the audience? Or online? All in favor, raise your right hand. Say aye. 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 All opposed, say no. Passes humanely. Uh before I go to the court of court, we're going to come back and get some citizens. Question and input on non agenda items. I know Mr. Bill Snyder wants to come down and speak. I know at least one. Okay, all right. We'll start with Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Snyder, Iowa Fonz Road, Jefferson County. On July four, twenty twenty six, we'll celebrate America's two hundred and fiftieth birthday as the most free, most benevolent, most envied. Most stable nation in history. Constitution Alive, a twelve lesson video series on our constitution will be presented at the Social Restaurant Monticello on Saturday mornings. Nine to ten thirty AM, beginning in September and going through mid-November. Twelve basic lessons on twelve consecutive Saturdays. This popular video series is known as a citizen's quick start guide to the constitution and has been presented all over our nation. Since twenty thirteen. This will be class number nine thousand nine hundred and eighty eight. Free pocket constitutions for everyone. Please spread the word and consider attending one or more lessons. All elected officials are invited to share their thoughts on our two hundred and fiftieth birthday and the constitution. If you aren't elected official, you're invited to share your thoughts for two to five minutes on our two hundred and fiftieth birthday as a nation. And our constitution. There's a keyword code and a link for more info. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. You haven't had a chance to see the Constitution Alive. It is a well-done uh series and it's very educational. And very informative and should be required to watch for everybody in the country. I don't know, Miss Richardson.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, and I do thank you for allowing us to speak. In a lots of timely fashions, are we? Okay. The TDC. And the Chamber of Commerce, in my opinion, need to be under one roof. I had another lady coming tonight, Dawn Perez from Taylor County. She is. Been there twenty, maybe close to thirty years, and she did the same thing that I did when I was at the chamber. She combined had the TDC and the chamber under one roof. She just came a few minutes ago due to health reasons. She handed me the stuff that she was going to say. Which is quite a lot like what I was going to say, but I, so what I'm going to do is combine them and read to you. What she wrote and I had a handout for each of you as well. May I approach? Thank you. Okay, again, this is Dawn Perez from. Taylor County. She is the executive director of the Chamber and the TDC there as well. They're stronger together. Why chambers of commerce and tourism development offices should work as one shared mission, one goal. Economic growth, business success, and a thriving community. Two lenses, one destination. Chamber, business advocacy, networking and retention. Tourism, visitor attraction, destination marketing and event promotion. Mutual benefits. Tourism drives business. Visitors spend money in local shops, restaurants and lodging. Business strengths support and tourism. Strong local businesses create better experiences for visitors. Efficiency and resource maximization. Unified marketing, one message, one brand, stronger recognition. Cross-trained teams, staff to cover overlapping roles and marketing events and outreach. Shared budgets, no duplication of ads, printing for promote promotional materials. Community engagement, joint events, signature festivals and expos attract both residents and visitors. Single point of contact. Easier for businesses, event planners and investors. And shared networks for volunteers, sponsors and partnerships. Competitive adjective advantage. Coordinated strategies allow faster responses to opportunities. Stronger proposals for grant and major events. More attractive to investors and developers. The bottom line, when chamber and tourism offices work as one, they create. A stronger local community. A stronger local economy. More impactful marketing, a better community experience for residents and visitors. And you have a handout that is very similar to this. That Dawn from Taylor County did present, did bring over here for me to give to y'all because for help she couldn't stay. So I know the TDC is not with uh leader right now and I think it would be. Worthwhile for you to consider. Joining the TDC and the chamber under one roof.
All right.
Um that was a surprise to me. Um I was here for different reasons. Um Rose Murray, one eighty Asheville Highway District. Um. I submitted nineteen potential agenda items for the TDC to consider in the August meeting. That meeting was canceled. One of the items that I asked for was that the chamber be invited to come talk to the TDC about opportunities for collaboration. Today. I submitted. Eleven agenda items I would like to see on September agenda for the TDC, including. The chamber being invited to present to the TDC about potential collaboration. Um I'm hoping that that will show up on the TDC agenda at our meeting, whichever date it is, September. Second or seventh, whatever, or eight, whatever. Um along with. The nineteen items I submitted for last month and eleven items I submitted today. We have a lot of work to do. I'd like to see it get done. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Um you know, I believe this many will have all of that for that meeting.
Yes, uh. I had uh is everything there?
Michelle Arsene, two thirty seven Monticello Road. I'm here to um. Just announced the Monticello Christmas event is coming up uh December sixth. We're hard at work already. We've been hard at work already for a couple of months. And I wanted to invite all of you to participate. We have fantastic parade. I know J K's in it sometimes to share. The Sheriff and Angela Gray have a little competition going on with their brand identities over here, so.
We get.
Love to see y'all participate. Everything is online this year, um parade uh applications, vendor applications. And I would love to see some of y'all participate in that and we're looking for volunteers. So if any of y'all would like to volunteer, we'd love to have you. Um also, I am a longtime member of the TDC and I. Again, I was also shocked by the presentation we just had. Um I was in in the TDC when it was combined with the chamber. And I do think there's some serious um. Considerations before any decisions made on that. I'm not sure that's the best.
Thank you, children. All right, anybody else? Anything they want to say? All right, we are moving on. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh this medicine. I'm here. Um new addition to the court solvent, wanted to share with everyone. Um when you go to the records uh section, my website. V O C C records and scroll down there to accept all the terms and additions. Um. The, we created a uh. YouTube channel, Miss Lila did that and uh we're going to be uploading Zoom recordings after every meeting there, so. So just want to go back to watch the meetings, they can. And um also the minutes going forward, as I know, we're um. Too behind, but we were going to update that with timestamps. So. What section uh you want in the meeting, uh general business, it'll have the time there, so you can use that as a guide. To uh. Help you navigate the video, so.
That's awesome. This is very fantastic. Another step towards. Pushing more transparency, but I'm thinking about. Anything else, Mr. Clerk?
That's all I have, sir.
All right, we got, I see a slew of county engineers here. Good to see you back there, Jack.
Thank you, Commissioner. So just a few updates. We have the plans for the Boston Highway Phase one and two. Ready to submit for V O T. They wanted to check a few elevations for the surveyor, so they're out there now just verifying a couple of things before they. Push it to construction, which should be momentarily. We have funding for phase one and phase two. Uh should get out bid at the same time, be completed at the same time. Um also, just want to thank you all for uh voting on that court authorization for Nashville Highway earlier. Uh we'll get up right on it. Y'all have anything for me?
Yeah, thank you for uh giving me that letter this afternoon. That that gentleman called me five minutes after that and I already sent it, so so now I say it's already in our inbox.
Could you um notify Shannon and myself, just I'd like to update my constituents about Boston Highway, just whenever.
Absolutely. As soon as the V O T gives us the go ahead, we'll have a good timeline on when recruitment will actually go out bid. And then uh we'll we'll get you that information.
Thank you. Anything else for? All right, anything else from? Move on, counsel.
Nothing additional for me this evening. Moving on, counsel, nothing additional for me to see, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Ms. Maddie.
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, one is, uh, Duke Energy has a grant they would like, uh, me to encourage me to apply for. It'd be approximately ten thousand dollars and I would like to use it to upgrade the lights at the, um, courthouse parking area and then potentially around the courthouse, so we can light up the courthouse itself a little bit, cause some of our lights have gone out. So I just, um, wanna make sure you guys are okay with moving forward with applying for that grant, um, with that, uh, scope of work. Nope, there's no match.
They like us to have lights.
Yeah, yeah, they do. And I won't say that the charging station is on their dime, so. The charging station is on their dime, so that's not costing us.
Max out of that farm lot, doesn't it?
Yeah, um, and then, uh, the, um, the meetings in September are different. So I wanna make sure, I emailed you all, but I wanna make sure I announce in the meeting as well, um, because of Labor Day and, uh, the budget hearings, we'll be having our first meeting on September eleventh, which is a Thursday. But it's our second week instead of the first, so it's, uh, the second week at, uh, at five oh one. Um, and then our second meeting will be, uh, September twenty-fourth, which is a Wednesday, um, also at five oh one. Um, normally we do it on a Wednesday because the, the Jefferson Journal only comes out, you know, on Friday. Our, our paper only does, uh, Wednesday and Friday. I received word that they are no longer going to be having the Jefferson Journal. Um, so we'll just be down to one paper a week, um. So with that, I, I need to start advertising in the Tallahassee Democrat with, for some of our stuff, because with budget hearings, you have to have them within five days and we can't have it on Wednesday unless y'all wanna meet on Sunday.
Ms. Maddie, did our, uh, our expansion of broadband across the county not loosen up some of the grip of having advertising numerous newspapers?
Um, that, that statute from my understanding that you have to advertise in the paper.
It is, yeah, there is like, there is the ability that you need certain broadband thresholds to go to internet-based advertising. I don't know the requirements off the top of my head. I can report back, but typically for owners, even for like very well.
I'm, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, it's, it's gonna be way more expensive to advertise than Tallahassee Democrat, that's the Jefferson Journal.
Yes, and I'm not excited about that, but it is what it is. But, um, if that is something that, um, because that is something we'll have to do, uh, we can technically probably have the meeting on the twenty-fifth. Instead of a Wednesday, we can have it on a normal Thursday, cause I, I, I can put it in the Democrat and they run every day. So I just, um, if you wanted to change it to the twenty-fifth, I'd. It's the fourth, the week, yeah. It'll be your second and fourth weeks, but instead of doing on Wednesday, we would just do it on Thursday. Do you have? What, sorry? I don't know. I don't know if there's enough circulation in Jefferson.
Circulation requirements, we have to look at that.
So what are you doing on Thursdays?
Yeah, is, if that's what y'all wanna stick with, cause I don't really wanna confuse, I mean, we're already off a week, so I don't know if we wanna go to a different day of the week as well. Yeah, and that's what some, if that's something you all are good with. Okay, keep it, yep.
I think the official meeting calendar has that Wednesday, so I think a formal vote would be good for just memorialize that for everyone. So Thursday, the eleventh. Thursday, the twentieth.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Can we get a motion? Sir, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion before I call to vote?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that's all I have. Oh, wait, sorry, uh, the panels, the fence went up today, but apparently someone ordered the wrong, uh, gate, so they, they're trying to fix it. So it's not finished, finished, but, um, from my understanding, the, at least the fence part is up, but not the gate, so.
Uh, Commissioner Hall?
Yes, sir. Uh, she is a primary and people want to go around town, just to, to ask if that's about to start paying. They possibly can get the engineers to do already, we have on the time to, to come up with our price as time set calls.
So it's not the construction that I was waiting on, it was the maintenance of one. And I got the cost from the insurance company and it is not that much, uh, more on our insurance. She, she said it was, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, so that's, you know, in the big scheme of things, it's not as bad, but, um, I was trying to find the maintenance. And, uh, so I was looking for one that was similar in size and, um, I have a call in to Tallahassee for the Ca- Cascades Park one, but I'm not getting the right person, so I'm still trying and I meant to email you about that and I forgot, I apologize. Yeah, yeah. Did you tell me that, um, Greenville had one? Yes, sir. I'll reach out to them.
Sure, gentlemen, help us out with the courthouse irrigation, help the irrigation probably, you know, that's right, well, I was any suggestion county, uh, citizen too.
I think we can try and find a spot. I know I'm, I'm having parking trouble with, um, at the park, so I'm, I don't wanna overload the park. But, um, but I, I, I don't know if it's something that you might, we would maybe think about partnering with the city on somewhere because they, uh, I, I think that it's best to have it hooked into a running water and sewer, not a well. And, um, yeah, so I, that it might be a good idea to partner with them. I know that they're looking at redoing their Cascade, or not Cascades, Chase Street Park, um, which is over there by CVS. I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but, um, it's the, uh, location. But, um, uh, just some ideas though, um, but, uh, I forgot about the Greenville, so I'll, I'll reach out to some more and I'll get something for you.
Uh, yes, one thing, I just got to see your move to come over to south the other day and they were doing a big ass job. They look good and they're going to keep it up. You know, they're catching up now, so I was thankful for everybody. We got all that done, thank you all.
Commissioner Hall, uh, Blake, so, uh, just two quick things. Do we have an update from FDLE, the investigations? Um, it's been referred to them, uh, the investigation and everything related to it is confidential, so I do not have any. Private road money, any, any update there?
I, um, I spoke with the contractor. He said that they're, they're getting mobilized. He didn't, he, but he didn't give me an exact date, um. But I did tell him, I'm like, you only have to the thirtieth, so, you know, don't, don't forget, um. No, that, that was our, of the state's timeline was September thirtieth. We have to have everything finished and they assured me we'll have everything finished, so I said, okay.
They do eventually go up. I asked Ms. Maddie, I said, was there a possibility that we could re-bid it out? Or if they didn't, we didn't think they were gonna come to the table soon enough, but if you're, you're confident they're coming, they had done a good job and so I was, I was like, I sleep with it, but I certainly don't want to lose that money.
I, I did have one more thing I forgot to mention, if it's alright, Commissioner. Um, I, the legislative delegation meeting is, um, uh, September is the eighth, um, Monday here, um, at ten o'clock. Um, I, 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 I don't have a lot of ideas as to things that we're, we should ask for at the moment. I figured we would just kinda stick with continuing with the courthouse and then trying to get the shelter, um, uh, you know, potentially going. But if you guys have any ideas, you know, please send them some in my way, so I, we can, what is it? We have, I, um, and I know we sent a, a, a support letter for Tri-County, but yeah, no, I, I, I think that's, I don't know if we can apply for it. Uh, we'd have to work out those, um, details, but, but yes, and what was it? Last year was seven, seventeen million? I'll get with you later, sorry. But, uh, he, uh, whatever ideas you guys have, um, so we have something to present.
I've already spoken with, uh, Representative Tan, Tan Center Simon about SB one eighty and the future of it. And what we could possibly do to amend it going forward to give us some new way. So that's just my heads up for you guys. That's, that's gonna be the approach that I'm gonna take to our requisition of that delegation. Alright, with that, anything else, the jury? Okay.